Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December 3rd, regular city council meeting. Dee Stiles Elliott, would you please call and roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delara.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerin.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither. Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither has requested to be excused from this meeting. Are you going to entertain a motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, on to mayor's community announcements. Just a few. First, there will be a special meeting of the capital improvement program and transportation improvement program committee on Thursday, December 5th, at 1:30. The engineering, city engineer and city staff will lead a discussion on six upcoming city transportation related to capital projects and their associated complete streets consideration. The meeting will be held in city council chambers at city hall. It's open to the public. There is on Saturday downtown Pullman dedication ceremony. Come celebrate the project downtown with the dedication ceremony on Saturday, December 7th at 3:30 in the Pine Street Plaza. Check out the improvements for Main Street and then stay for Holiday Fest that goes from 4 to 6. We have for Parks and Rec, drop and shop at the Pullman Aquatic Center. Do you need some holiday shopping without the kids? Drop the children ages two and a half or older off at the Pullman Aquatic Center from 6 to 9 on Friday, December 6th or Friday, December 13th for only $15. Sounds like fun. Please register at least two days in advance with Pullman Parks Recreation. Winter and spring activity guide. Are you ready for winter and spring activities to start? The Pullman Parks Recreation Winter and Spring Activity Guide will be available on the City of Pullman's website and in print on December 13th. Registration begins on December 18th. And for Neil Public Library, preschool story time, bring your preschoolers to Neil Public Library on Wednesday and Thursdays at 11:00 a.m. for some frosty fun with a selection of winter stories followed by cozy creative crafts. Kids have all the fun. That's just how it is. Our next up is non-agenda related community comments. This agenda item is the first of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials. Specifically, this item is reserved for public comment or concerns or other items not related to a previous public hearing or final action on the agenda. This agenda for comments will not exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments are to be directed to the mayor or the city council as a body. No comments should be directed to an individual council member. Is there anyone who would like to provide comments? With that, please.
Aline McCall, I live right here in Pullman. On the morning of the 26th, on Tuesday, we saw a lot of activity over on Orchard Drive and apparently a water leak had been detected and crews were working furiously to manage traffic and find the problem. I can't tell you how hard those guys worked. They worked all day without a break from about 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon, chasing that leak and digging a hole and moving mud and running equipment. And I mean, those guys went hammer and tong all day long. I can't tell you what a fantastic job they did. They got it fixed. We were only out of water for just a very few hours. An amazing job, amazing work. Thank you to all the, all the staff that was involved there. If you hear anybody complaining about how city crews work, boy, they are not paying attention. These guys did an amazing job and I thank them and thank you for your guidance.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to provide public comment? If not, I'll close that. Next up is city council member comments and with that, I'll start with councilmember Fagerin.
Thank you. Just one quick comment. I just want to thank everybody who participated in Small Business Saturday this weekend. It was great to go down and do a little shopping and supporting our local businesses. I don't want to know how people's wallets are feeling after Black Friday, Small Business Saturday, Cyber Monday. And then I also want to say we have Giving Tuesday today. There is five more hours to donate to your favorite nonprofit. There's a lot of nonprofits right here in Pullman that are matching donate dollar for dollar up to a certain threshold, so please support your favorite nonprofits. We have Council on Aging, United Way, Alternatives for the Palouse and many others. So please, a lot of these organizations are doing miracles on a shoestring budget, so they need every help that we can give them. So just thank you and go donate for Giving Tuesday.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to repeat, I want to also say about Small Business Saturday. It was wonderful to walk around downtown and see so many people. And so just a reminder too, to please, we really need to keep this effort going for our small, for our businesses downtown. There are several that are still struggling, so let's try not to forget them just always really, but especially right now. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Just to echo what my two colleagues to the left have said, and I do appreciate all of your support, as do the downtown businesses. Thank you.
Councilmember Guido?
So under the Tuesday Giving and Affordable Housing umbrella, I have to make a plug for, in addition to the, a lot of great local nonprofits that are looking for support today, just want to remind folks that the Hills and Rivers Housing Trust, used to be called Moscow Affordable Housing Trust, is expanding into Pullman with the hopes of building affordable housing here in Pullman. And they are currently asking for donations and you can give for that specific effort through something called Avenues for Hope, which you can find online. So it's avenues, the number four, hope. So I just wanted to make that plug.
Councilmember Weller?
No comment.
Councilmember Delara?
Yeah, so November 12th, an agenda request was placed for future discussion on the ceasefire resolution by December 3rd. The discussion on the ceasefire resolution is currently scheduled for December 17th to ensure that all council members are present to participate in this important conversation. The public can see the latest draft of the ceasefire resolution through tinyurl.com/cfrpullman. Just as a reminder, this draft is completely separate from the one presented in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is committees, commission and board's report. And we have Larry Clark from the Chair of the Environmental Resilience Commission, who is requesting a survey that they'd like to put out. With that, Larry?
Thank you, Mayor Benjamin. Thank you, councilmembers. I appreciate your time today. Just going to take a few minutes of your time going through something that we've been working on at the Environmental Resilience Commission, a survey for Pullman residents. So I'll walk through a few of the purposes of the survey, what the questions are like, and then open it up for any questions that you might have. All right, first of all, survey purposes. We put together a survey and one of the primary reasons is connected to a goal and also part of the mission of the ERC, which is outreach to the community. This provides an actionable way for Pullman residents to share their priorities around environmental resilience and sustainability. It can be used during presentations to service and civic groups, which is one of the things that we'd like to do as a way to gather feedback and provide a call to action. And as I said, this really fulfills part of our mission, which is community connection and getting people involved with the environmental resilience efforts. We also would like to gather some data for future ERC work. We could get information from this survey, which will help us to develop recommendations that we can then bring to you as, as city council members to consider and efforts that we might do to improve Pullman's environmental resiliency. Data can aid in identifying the priorities for what we'd like to work on, a goal that's continuing into next year, which is a sustainability plan, called sometimes a climate action plan in other, in other cities. The survey could also show some of the sentiment around environmental resilience topics among Pullman residents. This could also raise community awareness. You know, this is a new, relatively new commission. A lot of people don't even know the ERC exists. And so this could help us get the word out about what we do and then hopefully get their feedback and so kind of create this virtuous, virtuous cycle. And then maybe even lead to some applicants for open positions on the ERC that then could contact the mayor and, if they're interested in, in helping out. So the survey questions break down into just a few different areas. General environmental and sustainability questions, kind of open-ended, asking about priorities, you know, listing what they might be interested in that Pullman might engage in to improve its sustainability and to address climate change and other sustainability issues. Then we have some specific questions around transportation because we really wanted to dig into at least one area, but without overwhelming the survey. This is a really short survey. We hope people could finish it in five minutes. And so there are just some questions about how they get around Pullman, what they'd like to see differently within Pullman that could help us with some of our environmental resilience because transportation is such a key part of what we do and, and how we get around. It can affect the air quality and the environment. And finally, some demographic questions. And the demographic questions can be cross-referenced with the rest of the survey to assess whether there are particular groups that have specific concerns or goals they might want to see Pullman pursue. Conducting the survey, one of the things, I think I, you know, I mentioned meetings with community groups. We have a lot of really active civic and service groups around the city and we'd like to have the ERC leaders, myself in particular and the co-chair, Lauren Kirkpatrick, to go around to some of these area, different civic and, and service groups, talk about ERC, talk about our work, what we're trying to do. And this would be a really great call to action. You know, we could have a short link and a QR code. We could take the survey right there. An item in the city newsletter would be helpful. Once the survey is established, if the council approves it, that way, you know, it's another outreach tool. Finally, if, if all of you are willing, you know, we could ask councilmembers and, and Mayor Benjamin and perhaps others to promote the survey as part of their engagement work, you know, talking about the work of the, of the city. So with that, any questions or thoughts? Whoops.
Until we start, councilmember Weller?
Thank you so much. This is, this is really very cool. I was looking through some of the questions. Is this, so this is not the final copy? Is that right? The survey that we have in front of us?
It's the, the, the draft for consideration by the city council. It's been reviewed by the city's attorney.
Great.
And city staff has also helped us with it.
Great. And I wanted to ask, I had taken some notes. So you mentioned QR code. Are these surveys going to be in different languages is one question. And I'll just fire a few questions off here. Hard copies at the library possibly for those who may have, you know, the digital divide still exists. You mentioned social media type of push. And then also, is it going to be housed on the City of Pullman website? So just some general questions. I hope you got those.
Sure. First of all, thank you for the suggestion about paper copies. That's an excellent point. I do, you know, I think I'm, I'm guilty as charged when it comes to forgetting that there is that digital divide and making that available for people. The survey is a Qualtrics survey and we have a commission member who is a social scientist and so has access to Qualtrics. And so as it is now, it's not housed on the city website, but that's something that maybe needs to be considered, you know? That actually hasn't come up before, so.
Yeah, that would be, that would be a definite consideration. It would need to be housed within the city. Councilmember Guido?
Thanks, Larry. This is a great idea to do this, to get exposure for the commission as well as get feedback. My question has to do with the demographics. The question around, do you work for or affiliated, affiliated with Schweitzer Engineering? Are you a student at or do you work for Washington State University? I'm just wondering why those two are singled out.
I think as the largest employers within the city and many people within the city working for either WSU or Schweitzer, there may be, there may be some information we could glean from the survey, cross-referencing those demographics to see if, you know, there's something that say students and other people affiliated with WSU might be interested in or something that SEL, the folks might be interested in. So I think that that was the purpose behind it, was just identifying our two largest employers.
Seeing if there's particular trends or maybe they have a specific area that they'd like to work.
Yeah, you know, think about transportation, for example. The questions around transportation, there may be specific areas that folks associated with WSU might be interested in.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And related to that, I would, I would encourage you to expand that to like our top five, top six employers and then make it consistent where you have like, are you a student or do you work for? And then you have, do you work for affiliated? I think if you just say, are you affiliated with, because you're just asking, is there affiliation with that organization? So there's consistently question to question. Councilmember Delara?
Yeah, thank you so much for your presentation. I really am excited for the public transportation section. So I, I do have a lot of suggestions. I don't know, I don't want to take up too much time, just some ideas on questions that could be added. So I'm thinking about kind of gauging like what days and times are usually the regular, the regular times when people ride the bus? So maybe a question could be, what days do you typically take the bus? What times do you typically take the bus? And check all that apply and maybe breaking it down to early morning and then giving like a range of times. I think that's particularly helpful because one of the requests that keeps coming up is the extended bus times. And so that kind of data would help with informing like probably the timings of the bus that students in particular would like to see. I think the other questions that I personally feel would be interesting to add is what bus routes you take frequently and then having like a Likert scale on like least frequently to most frequently, just to see which buses are, are being used the most, or which bus routes are being used the most. I really like the idea of the bus stop drop pins on the map. That sounds kind of like a fun way to answer that question. And I think that's mostly the transportation questions. I do have an idea for the e-bikes and maybe you can incorporate maybe the drop pin feature that you're using for the bus stops. But the question would be, what locations would you like to see rental e-bikes and e-scooters placed? And having that drop pin method of answering that question would be cool. And I also have a list of demographics, but I, I don't want to take up too much time. Is there a way to maybe send kind of the questions?
So, so, so you know, first of all, they're trying to keep it very short.
Yeah.
And to add any questions is actually counter to, to this survey. And, and I think the first part of your survey is really, is the, the main focus is then, is the overall direction of the environmental committee. The transportation is not the main focus of the survey. So, you know, but you can definitely, you know, if you have additional comments, you can provide them to Larry in that way.
Yeah, I just have maybe suggestions around how to maybe break down certain demographics, particularly breaking apart whether a person is a student and figuring out what kind of student they are, like an undergrad, graduate student, or if they work at WSU, breaking that down on whether they're faculty, staff or a student employee. But I'll, I'll figure out a way to send you all those suggestions. I, I think this is a, I'm really excited that this survey is, is being conducted and any way I can help with disseminating and sharing the survey, I'm more than happy to help with that.
So Larry, I do have some comments related to it. Within the survey, you say the responses are confidential because of open public meetings and public records, that's, we cannot do that. So you can't list it as confidential. We can't say it's going to be aggregated. So within that context, you need to write, the questions need to be written in a way to understand every answer is discoverable as part of the public record. And so normally, in this case, you don't have a lot of text fill-in questions because of that, but it's more checkbox. And, and that's one of the things that you should probably move toward is the checkbox piece. On the one where you, you asked the question about the walkable city versus public transportation, you need to think about are statements accurate because your comment is that the public transportation would decrease total carbon emissions, but in reference to a walkable city, walkable city would actually decrease more carbon emissions.
That's true.
Than the public transportation. So, so how you word those things would be very careful in that way. You do reference the IPCC as a standard and what you really should look is what is the state standard since as, as a city? And there's RCW 70A dot 45, which is the standard as it relates to limiting greenhouse gas emissions. So that would actually be the one that we should be referencing, not the IPCC. Similar, I'm interested in how you came up with that list because if I look to ecology's list of what are the main points that are focused for environmental or if I look at EPA, there's things like recycling you don't have as a question in here. And so those are things that we want to, you want to think in that way. You do reference in here are some things where you reference, these are our current goals, but when I looked at the 2024 goals that you presented to us, those weren't specifically called out in the goals. So, so just that accuracy as it relates to, you know, if you're stating this is a goal, you need to be able to look up and actually see it as a goal. I know there's been comments related to that pin map, but that pin map is probably not accessible for someone that's sight impaired. So that's, so you need to think of any question as it relates to accessibility and being able to, be able to gather from everyone and not, and not exclude people from it. So that, I don't know how you do the pin map and also have the accessibility function related to it. So that's something that you would, you would want to look at that way. And then similarly, where I talked about the standard piece, when you ask the gender question, you should look and see what is the state standard. And if you look at what is a state standard for licenses and birth certificates, they have a state standard that is male, female, or not exclusive male nor female as opposed to all those others. So it's, and as a legal, that's one of those things we need to do. And then also with race and ethnicity, there is a new standard out there which includes a couple of others that you don't have listed there and I can provide those for you. So.
Okay.
You're getting, so other comments. Councilmember Delara?
Yeah, I guess in terms of sending suggestions post council meeting, should I send that to you or how does communication happen between commissioners and councilmembers?
They're figuring that one out. I, I think, I think there's some revisions that you're going to need to do in order to, to bring back.
That's exactly what we're just going to make sure that we do. So whatever, there's a lot of moving parts here. So council needs to be able to look at what would be considered pretty close to a final document to approve.
For that.
Definitely. And I think we see this as a draft and this is why I'm presenting it today. So I appreciate all the comments and, and ideas there, you know, this is really valuable. So I don't know, Mike, if you would send those to me if we could do that and maybe Ariel can do it or, but I will turn this around fairly quickly with all of the changes and that way councilmembers and mayor, you'll, you'll have a new draft to look at that will incorporate.
Sorry about all the, well, I mean, and, you know, and, and part of it is, is just making sure that we're consistent in, in the processes.
Yeah. Well, as an editor in my day job, you know, it's kind of par for the course. And I guess, you know, I do this to people all the time, my writers, so I, you know, I need it.
Thank you very much for sharing this, Larry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is city council and future regular agenda requests. Are there any future agenda requests? If not, then community comments on final action items. This agenda item is the second of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comment to the attention of the elected officials on an agenda item that the city council will take final action at this meeting excluding items where public comment was previously accepted. This exclusion extends to prior public hearings. This agenda for items for comments are not to exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments are to be directed to the mayor or the city council as a body. No comments should be directed to an individual council member. Is there anyone who would like to provide comments on any final action items? Seeing none, we'll close that. And next up, we have a presentation for the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee. So the executive director, Mike Falp, is up and it's good to see you again.
Good to see you, Mayor. So Mayor and council, thank you so much for inviting us. I, I have some, some updates for you, but, but first I'm going to go through some of the basics kind of as a matter of review. I know that councilmember Weller presented late spring, early summer. So some of the material will be redundant. I apologize for that, but I, I want to make sure that we all have the same understanding. If I'm moving too quickly or if anything needs clarification, please interrupt me and we'll, we'll do that. So every presentation starts, that I do starts with a, a picture of the, the big Artesian well in downtown Pullman. At this point, not long after the town was settled, it was, it was estimated to be providing 3 million gallons of water per day. That didn't last really long. Within several years, the, the flow declined quite a bit. The, when we talk about the Palouse groundwater basin, we're not talking about the entire Palouse. This shows our best understanding of the shared aquifer system that we draw all of our water from. You might notice that most of it is in Whitman County, but part of it is in Leighton County and that's, that's very important because like I said, this is a, a shared resource. About 60% of the water usage comes from Whitman County, being the cities of Palouse and Pullman and Washington State University. About 40% of the usage comes from Leighton County, being the cities of, city of Moscow and University of Idaho. of Idaho. The area is much greater of the basin in Whitman County, but our agriculture is nearly 100% un-irrigated, and that's why we have that disparity. Here's another view of the complexity of the basalt and sediment layers. A lot of people think that the aquifer is a big lake underneath us, and it's not. It's a maze of water. It's a very complex system. And the only way we can learn about it is by drilling a hole. So you can see there's the deepest well is under the city of Pullman. Actually, I think this one is on campus. And that, all of these wells collectively give us a pretty good understanding of the hydrogeology of the basin, but we can always learn more. But we do think that currently we have plenty of information to be actionable. I want to talk about the, what is the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee? These are the member entities, and I'd like to give a couple of shout-outs right now. The city of Pullman representatives on the committee are Councilmember Weller, Public Works Director Sean Wells, and City Engineer Kara Haley. All three of those are very active and helpful. Additionally, a shout-out to former Councilmember McCall, who previously represented the city of Pullman and is currently on our stakeholder engagement group. Am I moving too fast? Am I doing okay? All right. Thank you. So what we do, what PBAC does is try to understand our hydrogeology, encourage implementation of the groundwater management plan, prioritize water conservation, understand the hydrology as best we can, and investigate best alternatives for a supplemental water supply. Because what I'm just about to get into is that we don't have enough water on a long-term basis to serve our regional needs. So this is a good example. This is a particular well in Pullman that the level of the well has been declining over the years. This graph goes from 1990 to 2023. The rate of decline has decreased somewhat, but it continues to decline. And every single well is different, but this is a good representation of what we see. Something I'd really like to point out is that despite the increase in population of the region over the past 30-plus years, the water usage has actually stayed about the same. And it's, it's not useful in these things to look at one year compared to another year, because a lot of different things can affect our water usage. Even a big leak, one big leak can change your water usage. You see a little bit of a dip in 2020 when that was COVID and all the students left. And so these single events can make a difference, but the trends over long term do give us some very useful information. And what I see is that our water usage per capita, if you want to look at it that way, has actually declined over the last several years. This one, this one is, I'm always, I'm always a tad hesitant to show this one, because I don't want it to lead to finger pointing. And again, this shows a single year only, but this, the pie chart changes a little bit from year to year, but it doesn't change too much from year to year. So Pullman's a little bit bigger town than Moscow, and therefore, one would expect Pullman uses a little bit more water than Moscow. So since I've come on, I've been in this role nearly a year and a half now, and we've really increased our emphasis on water conservation, education, and outreach, and I'm proud of that. We actually, if anybody knows anybody or has any interest, we have an AmeriCorps position just posted for water conservation outreach primarily in Leittau County, but a little bit in Whitman County and Pullman. Conservation is a good idea from a lot of reasons, but what, this being a regulatory and funding-interested group, conservation is a good idea from an ROI perspective. Saving a gallon of water is much better from an economic standpoint than importing and treating a gallon of water. So a lot of effort, starting in 19, in the 50s, is, this is not a new, this is not new knowledge that the, you know, the Artesian wells went away a long time ago. And it's been known that the well levels were decreasing. So for a long time, it's been known that we would eventually need to find a water solution for the region other than aquifer or well water. And if you look around the Palouse, there's not a lot of options. When I started this position a year and a half ago, it was thought that the best solution would be the city of Pullman using the South Fork of the Clearwater, or excuse me, South Fork of Palouse River, the one here in town, and that the city of Moscow would be using Paradise Creek. We have looked at those numbers more carefully, and it does not look like either of those are viable options, both because of the treatability, so due to sedimentation and other things that would need to be taken out, and also because of the low flows of those, especially the low summer flows when we use the most water. So our current focus is looking at a diversion from the Clearwater River near the city of Lewiston, which would provide water to the city of Moscow to a region, some kind of regional treatment. And then we would divert a portion of that across the state line to the city of Pullman and to Washington State University for usage. There's a lot of unanswered questions with that, and we are starting the first big putting, my metaphor is sticking our toe in that water. I don't know if that's, well, at least it's not inappropriate. We have a request for qualifications out right now, and proposals are due December 20th. This is being done by the city of Moscow on PBAC's behalf. Two of the city of Pullman's representatives are on the RFQ Evaluation Committee, and we're hopeful that 18 months from now, these things don't never move as fast as you would, but we'd rather make a good decision a little bit cautiously than make a hasty decision that doesn't turn out to be the right one. So we're hopeful that by late spring of 2025, we'll have some good information on whether this is, in fact, the best alternative for a supplemental water supply for the region. And that's the information I came here to give you this evening. I have a really nice graphic that would show that, but it wasn't finalized yet. Nathan has seen a draft of it. I think Sean has seen a draft, and Eileen has seen a draft of it. So very soon, and I'll send that to Dee as soon as I get it. It should be any day now, and that'll, sorry that wasn't able to be part of the presentation. Are there any questions or comments that I can help with?
Not seen any, very well. Good job.
Thank you. That's the PBAC update. I'm always happy to come, and I appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the council is going to adjourn to executive session at this point in the agenda, and council adjourned to executive session pursuant to RCW 4230101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the city matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or discuss with legal counsel representing the agency potential litigation concerning litigation that has specifically threatened, to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in the official capacity is likely to become a party. Litigation that the agency reasonably believes may be commenced by or against the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in the official capacity. And litigation or legal risk of a proposed action or current practice of the agency as identified when public discussion of litigation or legal risk are likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequences of the agency. The executive session is expected to last 10 minutes. If it becomes necessary to extend the executive session, some will return to announce anticipated additional time needed by city council. It's 7:39 now. We'll go ahead and start the executive session at 7:41, and the council will then resume the meeting once the executive session is done. and the council then resume the meeting once the executive session is done.
City Council announces the executive session is going to go an additional five minutes, five minutes. City Council extends the executive session an additional three minutes, three minutes.
At this point, I'll call the city council member back, the city council meeting back. And we're on to the consent agenda. The items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion of the city council without separate discussion. That I'd entertain a motion to read the consent agenda by title only.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
With that, if you could read the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is a motion to dispense with the reading of the November 12, 2024, regular meeting minutes and approve them as submitted. Item two, a motion to dispense with the reading of the November 19, 2024, regular meeting minutes and approve them as submitted. Item three, a motion to approve disbursements for accounts payable checks numbered, excuse me, 2011-28830 through 2011-28889 totaling $2,377,393.37. Item four, a motion to approve disbursements for accounts payable checks, number 2011-28890 through 2011-28944 totaling $873,133.27. Item five, a motion to approve disbursements for accounts payable checks, electronic transfers, and ADP payroll transfers totaling $1,156,933.72. Item six, a resolution, resolution number R-65-24, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Pullman and the Pullman Senior Citizens Association for the purpose of providing transportation for the Pullman Nutrition Program and city-sponsored trips and special events. Item seven, a resolution number R-66-24, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Pullman and Council on Aging and Human Services for the purpose of providing a nutrition program for senior citizens. And finally, item eight, resolution number R-67-24, a resolution authorizing the execution of a supplemental agreement number one to the professional services agreement between the City of Pullman and Welch Comer Engineers for the Downtown Pullman Project Phase Three Construction Phase Services.
Thank you. Do any council members desire to have any items removed from the consent agenda to be discussed separately? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Next up is regular agenda, first regular agenda item, resolution R-6424. With that, Mike Urban, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Before you tonight, for your consideration is resolution R-68-24. And how this came about is in February of 2022, the Pullman City Council amended the city code regarding the Civic Improvement Fund and created expenditure limits specifically designating that contracts for tourism promotion and tourism facility operations at 25% of the revenues. Then in February of 2023, the city council approved a tourism promotion and event management agreement with the Pullman Chamber of Commerce. As they were our only bidder, the contract was approved and they had a set of dollars set aside for that tourism promotion. And what has happened now is the anticipated expenditures of that tourism promotion for the facility operation, that that codified 25%, would be $185,622. And since that time now, that contract is exceeding that amount. So since this is an issue of city code and not of budget, because the budget was set for the right amount, but the city code limits the amount that we can spend on it, we're asking the city council, and we're recommending approval of the resolution in front of you as presented, to set aside the 25% maximum expenditure threshold rule for the 2024 calendar year as it comes to the Tourism Promotion Agency services already being provided, which the council was aware when they approved the contract and when we budgeted. We just want to clear this up so we have a clean audit. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to adopt resolution number R-68-24.
Second?
Second.
There's a second. With that, if you could read the resolution.
Resolution number R-68-24, a resolution setting aside Civic Improvement Fund expenditure max, maximum threshold references for the 2024 calendar year for contracts for tourism promotion or tourism facility operations.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, council. Thank you. Next up, resolution R-6924. With that, Sean Wells, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Sean Wells, Public Works Director, for those of you that don't know me. Tonight, I'm presenting three different resolutions which would increase utility rates for inflationary purposes for the water, the sewer, and the stormwater. And I've got a little presentation that I'll do to begin everything, and then we can take action, is my proposal, on each one of those if we need to. So Public Works Utility Services, we, just kind of a brief history here, we provide all of the water system maintenance and operations, the rates that the utility rate payers pay back to us, pay for our regular operations, maintenance, and capital expenditures within the water system, our wells, our pump stations, and all of the potable water supply that we provide. Also, the sewer rates will pay for the sewage collection system, the wastewater treatment plant, all of the sewer lift stations, and then ultimately collecting that and discharging it, the liquids into the South Fork of the Palouse River, or the biosolids that then are produced as well. And as you know, we haul those away for either application on a farmer's field, or currently composting with two facilities, one in Airway Heights and one in Lewiston. Stormwater system maintenance and operations, this goes to help, those rates come in and they help us administer our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permitting requirements, and collect, treat, detain when we have to, the stormwater system after rain events. And then the engineering services that are required to help operate and maintain those as well. But tonight, we're here because of inflation. The inflationary rates have like, kind of like this graphic, it's gone to the moon. And we wanted to essentially right-size to a certain degree what those rates are. So the previous rate increases and the Consumer Price Index, I wanted to have a little discussion on that right now. Water, sewer, and stormwater rates were last brought to the council in September of 2022 by the previous Public Works Director at that time. Prior to that, the last time the rates were looked at for water and sewer was 2019, and the stormwater was in 2011. In 2022, council authorized a 4.5% increase to the rates at that time, also due to CPI indexes as well. Since that time, the Consumer Price Index, CPIW, that we now currently use, has increased 6.3%. And And those costs that we're seeing in the utilities, all three of the utilities, as we presented in the budget presentations a few weeks ago, have to deal with salaries, wages, insurance going up, materials and parts, those costs have gone up, as well as our fuel, our energy costs to Avista for gas and power to run some of our pump stations and the sewer treatment plant itself, as well as just the regular consumables and supplies. So, back up a step here, utility, all three utilities are currently undergoing system master plan amendments. Our water system master plan is currently with the Department of Public Health for their review and final approvals. That report is essentially done, but we're waiting on their final approval before we can bring that back for implementation with the council. Sewer and stormwater system master plans are being worked on right now, and the intent is that those would be ready for adoption sometime mid-2025. The plan then is that we would have master plans in place and then go to another consulting firm and have cost of service analyses done on each one of those individual utilities. And that would take what we have in our plans, what we know we need to go and build, repair, maintain, and gives us then, what do we need to then charge our customers to make that happen? Those would come immediately after the adoption of those individual system master plans. So, we're anticipating that water will come first, followed by sewer and storm, whenever they come out and get approved there. Those would inform our rates, those cost of service analyses, and ideally then, we would have those complete by the end of '25, the beginning of 2026. This affects and has impacts to the budget and the capital plans. Our utility budgets were held fairly flat for this budget cycle, as you saw in the adoption in the last couple of council meetings. Our capital plans, we've needed to kind of postpone, to the extent feasible, some anticipated projects, and some of those repairs that we need to maintain and make happen, we've got to kind of delay those. And we don't want to delay those too much, otherwise we get, like the picture shows here, broken gate valves on water main. This one happens to be the 10-inch gate valve that was repaired this fall on South Grand. Staff workloads are at capacity, and we've got, obviously, the aging infrastructure like I've presented to some of those last few emails that you've received from me this week. So, staff is recommending with each one of these utilities, just pretty much a 6% utility rate increase across the board on each one of them to account for almost the CPI index of 6.3. And we're proposing those through the three resolutions that you're here to see tonight, the stormwater, the water, and the sewer. So, what does that look like for the average single-family residential? This was an estimate that I put together, and it assumes fairly standard seven CCF, which is 100 cubic feet consumption of water on a single-family residence. I also included comparables with Wenatchee, Ellensburg, and Walla Walla, just to see kind of where we were roughly. But what this does is it increases in the winter rates, the Pullman first column there in 2024, from just under $80.7996 to what would be proposed as a $4.61 increase, given each individual utility additional there. And the summer rates are down below. I didn't change the consumption of water, but we do charge a little bit more during the summer, for the summer rates to incentivize water consumptions. And that would increase the winter, I'm sorry, the summer monthly rate by $4.67. Now, that obviously varies depending on water consumption, how much water you use, you pay a little more, so. But you can see the comparables there with Wenatchee, Ellensburg, and surprisingly, Walla Walla were very affordable compared to those three other cities there. So with that, staff's recommending approval of the three resolutions that are before you, we have to take action on each one of them individually, but I can answer any questions anybody has.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you, Sean. I always appreciate your, the information that you provide. I think that as hard as this, as difficult as this is, I think it's better to address it now than to not address it now and have to raise it even more. Or, as we've pointed out with the downtown project, end up with broken water mains and sewage backups. And so, I think that keeping current so that we can keep maintaining what we have is the best course of action.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion for the first, for Resolution R-6924.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Second. With that, if you could read the first resolution?
Resolution Number R-69-24, a resolution adopting a fee schedule for the Storm Drainage and Surface Water Management Utility Chapter of the Public Services and Utilities Code pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 10.30 of the Pullman City Code.
With that, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Entertain a motion for the next resolution?
Move to approve Resolution Number R-70-24.
Second.
With that, if you could read it?
Resolution Number R-70-24, a resolution adopting a fee schedule for the Water Utility Code pursuant to the provision, provisions of Chapters 10A.35 of the Pullman City Code.
With that, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And one last resolution, I'd entertain a motion for?
Move to adopt Resolution Number R-71-24.
That, if you could read the resolution?
Resolution Number R-71-24, a resolution adopting a fee schedule for the sewer rates and charges chapter of the Public Services and Utilities Code pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 10.20 of the Pullman City Code.
With that, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Next agenda item up is Resolution R-7224, a resolution to participate in Anovia Foundation's Heart and Soul Program. This is something where the community of Pullman is one of seven communities that have been selected within Anovia Foundation's 200 county, 20 county service area. So it's something that's very exclusive in that way, and the Heart and Soul Program is an opportunity for outreach around what's the, the heart and desires that the community has that they'd like to accomplish. It's if you think about Pullman 2040, that was done eight to nine years ago, where we did that public outreach, this would be kind of versions 2.0 related to it. And it's, and it's using the Heart and Soul Program that's designed to be able to reach out to the whole community and, and connect and engage and hear what are, what are the things that people really appreciate in the community, want to keep, and also what are the things they'd like to see changed? This is, the Heart and Soul Program is something that is, it's a multi-year program in which as a part of the funding, they're able to hire someone to help with the, with the data collection piece. And in addition to, they have coaches that will provide, and they're actually looking for representatives from every area within the community to be a part of this data gathering piece. As a part of the award of the grant, Anovia has asked for the community, the, the city council, to be involved in this piece, and that's, and has requested that this resolution be passed in that. So with that, Pat, you, you're on the Anovia Board, so do you have any other thoughts?
No, other than it's just an excellent way to find out what people want for the community, what, what they, what they like, what they don't like, and what they aspire to. And so I think this is a great way to get that full-on involvement with help from Anovia, where we will be able to accomplish that as a goal.
Great. Questions? So Councilmember Fagerin?
Not really a question, but just a statement. I'm really excited for this Community Heart and Soul Project, especially how it's going to help, you know, craft our community's long-term vision for the Palouse. I hope that as, with Pullman participating in this, we can advocate that when we do go out into the community to collect people's stories, because that's a very important part of this, that we do so equitably, whether it's on Zoom, in person, we definitely want to make sure that every avenue, we can collect those story, we can use every avenue to collect those stories. And so, I just hope that we advocate for that kind of data collection.
That is something that is continually talked about within this program, and, you know, they're looking for more individuals to be at the leadership level, more individuals to be at the community gathering level, in order to make sure all areas of the community are reached. Other questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion for adoption of this resolution?
Move to adopt Resolution R-72-24.
Second.
That, if you could read the resolution?
Yep. Resolution R-72-24, a resolution to participate in Anovia Foundation's Heart and Soul Program.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. With that, I believe we have accomplished all of, that is on our agenda, and with that, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.